Good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and get settled as we start our meeting today. Thank you for being here for the Board of Commissioners meeting this March 28th, 2023. I'm pleased today that we have Pastor Frederick Anderson of Covenant Christian Ministries. He will be providing our invocation, and that invocation will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Deputy Mcfee. For those of you willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
To the commission and chairperson, if we would bow our heads in prayer, thank you for the honor. Father, we thank you. This is a day you made. We rejoice. We're glad in it. We acknowledge you in everything. We thank you for life, health, and strength. Through the act of obedience, you said that we ought to pray for those in authority and those who govern. You say in the scripture that you've ordained governance, and we should stand in subjection and reverence. So at this time, we pray for those who make decisions for our city, community, and we thank you for them. The Word encourages us. If we lack wisdom, everyone should ask you for wisdom, and you would give us wisdom liberally. So I stand in the gap as an intercessor, pray that you will give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, guide them in their affairs, so that their conduct will be well-pleasing and we can all live a peaceable and quiet life. We give you praise in all things. We acknowledge you in all things. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor and Deputy Mcfee. Our meeting is now called to order. At the top of our meeting, we have a number of presentations, which will be brought by the commissioners. And our first one, I'm pretty excited to help provide with the board, which is the presentation of ceremonial checks to recent recipients of our American Rescue Plan Act funds. Commissioners, if you can join me up front, what I will do is I will call each organization down individually, and we will recognize them. All right, Commissioners, if you could join me down front. And if we can have Positive Impact Health Centers join us, please. In February, the Board of Commissioners awarded over $90 million to about 90 organizations, including those in the county, our departments, and to our nonprofit organizations for helping us recover from the COVID pandemic that we had, not only from a health perspective, but from an economic and socioeconomic perspective. And I'm grateful that we had a number of partners within the county step up to help us in our recovery. And today, we have one such example. And in fact, there were multiple organizations provided within this subsection, but here we have Positive Impact Health Centers. We should have Ms. Olivia Chelko, that's you, Amanda Holloway, and Karen Cross. And I understand your project will be providing mental health and substance-to-be services, medical supply kits, health insurance, excuse me, yes, health insurance assistance, transportation, housing, and food assistance to Cobb County residents who have or are at risk of having HIV/AIDS based on individual needs. Thank you so much for stepping to provide this service for our residents. And I'm going to give you the mic if you'd like to share a little bit about your organization. Don't be shy.
It's gonna be me. Thank you so much. If you don't know anything about our agency, we serve people living with HIV, and we also do risk reduction prevention programs throughout the community. We have four locations, actually, Shambly, Duluth, Decatur, and Marietta. And we're actually in the Board of Health building right now, and we do mental health, substance abuse. Both of those programs are open up to people living with HIV and also people who are HIV negative. And then we do medical care for people who are living with HIV. So we have a huge viral suppression rate. It's 90%, which is way higher than any national average, but sometimes is around about 70%, which, if you don't know anything about HIV, when we get someone virally suppressed, they're actually at no risk of transmitting HIV to another person. So not only what we do for people living with HIV is also about community prevention and reducing community viral load. So thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciated. If you can join us in the middle, we'll come around you here for a picture. For those of you who may not know, Cobb County is in one of about three dozen counties for increased rates of HIV transmission nationally. So having services in this area are pretty important for us.
Okay, can you tilt the top of the marvelous check? All right, here we go. Three, two, one, and done. Thank you.
You can put it in your office, but I wouldn't take it to the bank. All right, next up, we have an organization that we will recognize tonight. It is called Reach Out and Read. Anyone from that organization, please join us up front, where we can honor you with a check presentation. We'll have you just stand in the middle during the presentation. And you must be Amy Erickson. You're not? Or Lori Crawford? Yes? Okay.
Klinker, Carolina Klinker.
Carolina, I've seen your name. Good to put a name with a face. Okay, very good. All right. We are grateful that we have Carolina Klinker here with us today, and she seems to know many of us here on the board. She is with Reach Out and Read, and their mission is to give all young children an equal foundation for success by promoting early literacy and incorporating developmentally, culturally, and linguistically appropriate new books that children can bring home after routine pediatric care visits. We appreciate you providing this program, helping our children get back up to speed. As we know, a lot of them have been impacted during the pandemic, and we'll appreciate if you can share a little bit about your organization.
Thank you so much. So Reach Out and Read, Georgia, we're part of a national organization that focuses on helping parents understand how to engage with their children, starting at birth through five years of age. So we're an early intervention model, where children receive books and guidance on the part of trained providers on how to love and care and nurture their children through books. And they get brand-new, age-appropriate books at the Well Visits and some of our clinics, especially here in Cobb. We have three, and we're hoping to expand with resources. But they also give out gently-used books and books for older kids. So one of our consequences is that we create lovers of books. So we need gently-used books and new books for kids of all ages. So what we found is children who participate in our program arrive to school with a six-month language gain because they've been read to so often, and because the parents know how and what kind of books and how to engage with their children. So it's a really amazing program, and I'm so glad that we're expanding it here in Cobb. So thank you very much.
You're right on time. Exactly.
Okay, here we go. Three, one more angle. Thank you.
Thank you.
While we're transitioning, I'd like to call up Ms. Carolyn Turner of None Other Than Hope Family Resource Center. All right. Yes, let us know who your crew is. Let us know who your crew is.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Turner with Hope Family Resource Center. These are a couple of my board members. This is Antoinette, and this is Perlene McKenzie. Have one sitting back there and two on the way, but they'll just be too late. Thank you.
Very good. And I'm going to change things up a little bit and pass my cheat sheet down to Commissioners, and each one of you can read a description of the organization and then hand them the mic. So Hope Family Resource Center is there.
Funding to support the expanding need for food by children and families demonstrating food instability in Cobb County from the ongoing financial impact of the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yes, thank you for all the work that you've done. Some of us have volunteered with Hope Family Resources during the pandemic, and know you've been receiving funding since the CARES appropriation.
Thank you very much. We are a, of course, nonprofit organization. We are a basic need. We provide food, clothing, shelter for families and children. We are a busy organization. We have a business going on, but at the same time, we, especially during the pandemic, we transformed our office into a place to give out food in the lobby. It was really, we did everything that we could. Had some very fantastic volunteers, which two of the commissioners here have come to help us. But throughout the year, we do many things. We do many things. We're very busy doing what we can do for families and families that are facing challenges and that are down on hard times. And I always tell them I have a compassion for those that are less fortunate, those that are in need. And God has placed us and put us in this community to help, and that's what we do. And we're very proud of it, very proud to be a part of the ARPA grant, and we're just so thankful. It's just going to help us to move forward just that much more in helping our families in Cobb County.
Exactly. I see some of you wearing blue shirts out in the audience. Please come forward so you can be captured in this photo. Yes, come on in. Hey. Are we okay?
Yeah, that works. Okay, here we go. Three, two, one more angle. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Thank you, all of you. You're very welcome. Thank you. Yes, good seeing you. Thank you. All right, I'll pass that sheet down, and we're going to recognize our next organization, which is Georgia Micro Enterprise Network, receiving $2.7 million.
Yes, ma'am. If those from the organization would approach. It's a good day when you get a big check. All right, so this is with regards to our Support Services category of funding, and this is to provide, project, a project to provide housing and mortgage assistance, small and minority-owned business assistance, and workforce development. It's a nice trifecta.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, do you have anything you want to share about your organization?
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Wilson. I'm the Executive Director of the Georgia Micro Enterprise Network. Last year, we celebrated our 25th year of providing services here in Georgia to Georgia's small micro agribusinesses. During the pandemic, we were asked to also assist with individuals who were impacted, losing their homes and losing their apartments. And over the last two years, we've provided over $25 million in assistance to Georgia residents. So we're very pleased to now be able to provide those services to Cobb County residents. Looking forward to providing those services and many more. Thank you.
Luther, Luther Washington, can you come up? Yay!
I got you. Hey, Michael. How are you?
Okay. The Family Life Restoration Center is seeking funding to provide services to homeless residents, mortgage and rental assistance to historically disadvantaged communities, and workforce placement training for recent graduates as well as under and unemployed. So $64,800.
Do you want to say a few words? Well, I want to take time to thank the commissioners, Board of Commissioners, because we know all the behind-the-scenes stuff to make this happen, and we just want to thank y'all wholeheartedly for helping us with this. We've been in the community about 17 years there in Mableton, and so we just thank God for being able to be his hand and feet in the community. Thank you.
All right, here we go. Ready? One more angle. Good, thank you.
Okay, you're next. Okay, and the final contestant is Cobb Works, Sonya Grant. Come on down. Hey, Sonya! All righty. So most of you are familiar with Sonya Grant. She's the, she runs our Cobb Works program. But this project will assist childcare learning centers and family childcare learning homes with their current workforce challenges. The purpose of the grant program is to help offset the cost of retaining and recruiting workers. And we are issuing a check in the amount of $3,773,358 and 1 cent. No, the 1 cent, I just threw that in. Thank you so much, Commissioners. This is truly an honor to be here today, and I'm so excited about this investment. Thank you for your ongoing support. Cobb Works has been around for 23 years. We provide the workforce development resources and services to Cobb County residents and employers. This money is going to make a huge impact on our community in getting our workers back to work and building those talent pipeline and literacy services that we so desperately need in this county. So thank you again for your support. Oh, I apologize. I have with me today Elisa Jackson. Elisa Jackson's been with our organization, well, I should call her AJ. That's what everyone knows her by. She's been with our organization for 22 years. I am so grateful to have her with me today and just grateful for her support and ongoing commitment to this community and to the work that we do here in Cobb. So thank you again, Elisa, for being here with me today.
One more comment, if I may. A million of this is going to Gritters. There will be a workforce development component inside Gritters, and we're so grateful for your assistance with this. Thank you.
My pleasure. That concludes our presentation, and thank you, Jimmy Yeecey, for him and his team's work in facilitating that program. Okay, we are going to move on to our second presentation of the evening, which will be brought by Commissioner Gambrell.
And if I can have the Dominion Christian Knights basketball team, both the boys and the girls, can come up together, please?
I know Dominion is quite special to our family and especially the basketball program, and so it is with great pleasure that I get to present these certificates. First, we're going to do the Certificate of Achievement presented to Coach Mike Gold from the Dominion Christian School Athletic Director. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you for your exemplary leadership this season, contributing to the Dominion Christian Schools varsity girl basketball team win for the GIAA District One Championship and making it to the first round of the GIAA 3A State Tournament. Your winning GIAA Coach of the Year is a reflection of your decades of work with young athletes and teaching them how to achieve their goals. Thus, the 20th day of March, 2023. We'd also like to recognize with the Certificate of Achievement to Christopher Smith. He is a Dominion Christian School Assistant Athletic Director. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you for your exemplary leadership this season, contributing to the Dominion Christian School Varsity Boys Basketball Team win with the GIAA District One Championship and making it to the Final Four GIAA 3A State Tournament. Your winning GIAA Coach of the Year is a reflection of your work with young athletes in teaching them how to achieve their goals. Thus, the 20th day of March, 2023. So we have certificates for each of the players from both the boys' and the girls' teams. I will hand them to the coach and let you each distribute them, but let me recognize the boys' basketball team, and if you're here, please step forward and raise your hand. Senior Channing Bates. Senior Jaden Brown. Senior Braden Graber. Senior Kaden Hardman. Senior JD Roberts. Senior Jay Sean Smith. Senior Will Walker. Junior Jaden Bates. Junior Jalen Howard. Junior Vernell Jones. Junior Layden Robic. Junior Evan Young. Junior Leek Metters. And our sophomore Drew Walker. And a sophomore Tate Johnson. Well, thank you very much, boys, and I congratulate you on your state championship, or I guess regional, I'm sorry. And then for the girls' basketball, who also won the regional championship, we have Senior Marcy, or Macy Campbell. Sophomore Amber Phan. Freshman Nora Little. Senior Laney Tanner. Sophomore Emery Mayer. Senior Grace Verstig. Sophomore Sophia Jackson. Freshman Alexa Reckon. Freshman Chloe Jackson. Senior Kylie Scott. Senior Lacey Blair, and also freshman Elizabeth Johnson. Coach Gold, would you like to say anything?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for this recognition. Unfortunately, a school our size, we have to share players. So half of my team's not here tonight. They're playing soccer, tennis, and got some boys playing baseball. So unfortunately, they're not here, but they're, they say thank you as well. And again, God's hand a blessing. Just incredible, incredible accomplishment. We both, in the same night, got a chance to cut down the nets together. Boys on one end, girls on the other end. Special, special occasion for the school. On the girls' side as well, it was the first time that we've won the region since 2005. So it's been a few years. The boys hasn't been so long. I think theirs was 2014 was the last time they won. So we're just grateful. Again, thank you so much. We're blessed and just an honor tonight to stand before you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Less tall people in front.
Thank you all for joining us here tonight. I know Dominion is quite special to our family and especially the basketball program, and so it is with great pleasure that I get to present these certificates. First, we're going to do the Certificate of Achievement presented to Coach Mike Gold from the Dominion Christian School Athletic Director. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you for your exemplary leadership this season, contributing to the Dominion Christian Schools varsity girl basketball team win for the GIAA District One Championship and making it to the first round of the GIAA 3A State Tournament. Your winning GIAA Coach of the Year is a reflection of your decades of work with young athletes and teaching them how to achieve their goals. This is the 20th day of March, 2023. We'd also like to recognize with the Certificate of Achievement to Christopher Smith. He is a Dominion Christian School Assistant Athletic Director. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulate you for your exemplary leadership this season, contributing to the Dominion Christian School Varsity Boys Basketball Team win with the GIAA District One Championship and making it to the Final Four GIAA 3A State Tournament. Your winning GIAA Coach of the Year is a reflection of your work with young athletes in teaching them how to achieve their goals. This is the 20th day of March, 2023. So, we have certificates for each of the players from both the boys' and the girls' teams. I will hand them to the coach and let you each distribute them, but let me recognize the boys' basketball team, and if you're here, please step forward and raise your hand. Senior Channing Bates. Senior Jaden Brown. Senior Braden Graber. It's not here. Senior Kaden Hardman. Senior JD Roberts. Senior Jay Sean Smith. Senior Will Walker. Junior Jaden Bates. Junior Jalen Howard. Junior Vernell Jones. Junior Layden Robic. Junior Evan Young. Junior Leek Metters. And our sophomore Drew Walker. And a sophomore Tate Johnson. Well, thank you very much, boys. And then congratulations on your state championship, or I guess regional, I'm sorry. And then for the girls' basketball, who also won the regional championship, we have Senior Marcy, or Macy Campbell. Sophomore Amber Phan. Freshman Nora Little. Senior Laney Tanner. Sophomore Emery Mayer. Senior Grace Verstig. Sophomore Sophia Jackson. Freshman Alexa Reckon. Freshman Chloe Jackson. Senior Kylie Scott. Senior Lacey Blair. And also freshman Elizabeth Johnson. Coach Gold, would you like to say anything?
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for this recognition. Unfortunately, a school our size, we have to share players. So, half of my team's not here tonight. They're playing soccer, tennis, and got some boys playing baseball. So, unfortunately, they're not here, but they say thank you as well. And again, God's hand a blessing. Just incredible, incredible accomplishment. We both, in the same night, got a chance to cut down the nets together. Boys on one end, girls on the other end. Special, special occasion for the school. On the girls' side as well, it was the first time that we've won the region since 2005. So, it's been a few years. The boys hasn't been so long. I think theirs was 2014 was the last time they won. So, we're just grateful. Again, thank you so much. We're blessed and just an honor tonight to stand before you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And nobody wants to come.
All right, that's good. You ready? Here we go. Three, two, one, and we are done.
Congratulations. I'm gonna have to come to the gang and watch her.
That's awesome. Thank you. Our next presentation will be brought by Commissioner Richardson in recognition of Red Cross Month.
Those from the Red Cross, please come up. All right. So, in recognition of American Red Cross Month, March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in Georgia across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago. And whereas every day, these individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for Georgia residents, including addressing urgent needs for food, lodging, and recovery, supporting, support during local disasters such as home fires, hurricanes, wildfires, and tornadoes, which I can definitely attest to receiving the benefits of that. And whereas the roughly 3,400 Red Cross of Georgia volunteers have supported our communities by collecting more than 178,000 blood donations while hosting over 8,000 blood drives last year alone. The Red Cross team also has supported our military, veterans, and their families through more than 20,000 case services. And therefore, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes March 2023 as Red Cross Month and thanks the organization for its support, volunteerism, and generous donations, which are critical to our community's resilience this the 28th day of March 2023. Congratulations. Would you like to share any words?
Everyone, of course, knows, as has been stated, what the Red Cross does, so I don't need to go into that. I just want to thank the Commission and particularly Commissioner Richardson for recognizing us and all the good that the Red Cross does every year. Thank you.
Absolutely, and happy to do so. Please clap.
Our next proclamation will be brought by Commissioner Burl, and these are for those who have been volunteering with our water system.
Thank you. We have our Water System Director and staff, and Dezenae Rivera, Connie Gosh, Officer Justice, Tim Phillips, and Stacy Hare. Good evening, everyone. I'm honored to be able to present this proclamation for these volunteers for our water system. They dedicate their time and talents every year for many years, and we are really appreciative of all the work they do. Whereas each year, more than 1,000 volunteers actively support and assist the Cobb County Water System staff with their work, including water quality monitoring, stream cleanups, and community outreach. Their activities have a direct impact on water quality and the health of our community. And whereas last year, volunteers reported 4,000 hours adopting 82 stream locations and submitting data for 850 monitoring events, 69 stream cleanup events, 21 outreach events, and 32 habitat events. Jennifer, come up here. They marked storm drains, monitored amphibians, removed invasive plant species, and more. And whereas they represent the best of Cobb efforts to connect community to local ecology. In providing these services, they inspire others to take actions that improve Cobb County by promoting responsible practices and behavioral changes. And whereas volunteer water stewards exemplify the spirit of civic engagement, modeling how residents can work with local government to improve community, now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby commend the Cobb County Water Systems Water stewards for facilitating practices to conserve water resources, protect local water quality, and engage the community in pollution prevention. These collective efforts demonstrate the impact of commitment, volunteer service, our quality of life is improved thanks to their work. This is the 28th day of March, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to recognize our volunteer program, our staff, and then we have certificates for each of the volunteers that were award winners of our programs. We have a great program, and then we have special volunteers that we're recognizing tonight that won, won awards.
And we're all going to present a certificate. Destiny Rivera, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners commends you for being named the Cobb County Water System Volunteer of the Year. Your dedication through more than 80 hours of service to stewardship and conservation programs, including storm drain marking, private pools, rain garden workdays, and community outreach events, has had a positive impact on the quality of life in Cobb County. The Board of Commissioners thank you for being an active water system volunteer and honors your ongoing efforts to protect, sustain, and renew our community. Thank you.
And I have Connie Gosh. Did I say that properly? Awesome. So, this is a certificate of recognition presented to Connie Gosh. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners commends you for receiving the Cobb County Water System Commitment to Stewardship Award. Over the past 17 years, your efforts recruiting volunteers and facilitating steam programs, stream programs in both Rubes Creek and Nikajack Creek watersheds demonstrate sustained and inspired leadership. The Board of Commissioners thanks you for being an active water system volunteer and honors your ongoing efforts to protect, sustain, and renew our community. Congratulations.
All right, next up, this certificate of recognition will be presented to Officer Michael The Cobb Board of Commissioners commends you for receiving the Cobb Water System Partnership Award. Your involvement in stream monitoring and support of our water system programs while serving in the Cobb Police Department Community Affairs Unit exemplifies the essential partnership between community and local government. The Board of Commissioners thanks you for being an active water system volunteer, and we honor you for your ongoing efforts to protect, sustain, and renew our community. This is the 28th day of March. Congratulations.
The Cobb County Board of Commissioners commends you on receiving the Red Flag Award for the Georgia Environmental Protection Division for your extraordinary adopt-a-stream efforts. Your proactive report of high bacteria counts at your monitoring site on Rottenwood Creek resulted in the quick repair of a broken sewer line. The Board of Commissioners thanks you for being an active water system volunteer since 2006 and honors your ongoing efforts to protect, sustain, and renew our community. This is the 28th day of March, 2023.
The Cobb County Board of Commissioners Certificate of Recognition is presented to Stacy Hare. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners commends you on receiving the Red Flag Award from the Georgia Environmental Protection Division for your extraordinary adopt-a-stream efforts. Your protective reporting of high bacteria counts at your monitoring site at Rottenwood Creek resulted in the quick repair of a broken sewer line. The Board of Commissioners thanks you for being an active water system volunteer since 2006 and honors your ongoing efforts to protect, sustain, and renew our community. This is the 28th day of March, 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you. I also like to just take a second to recognize water system staff that is here. We have Julie Nobby, Michael Cale, Angie Marcus, and Jennifer McCoy, and they are with our public education program. They do a lot with the volunteers. They do a lot of education in schools, and I'll give Jennifer like two seconds to say a little bit.
We are just really proud of all of you, and thank you so much. You can volunteer anywhere, and I think it's amazing that you're volunteering with your local government and helping us put out good works to our community about water, pollution prevention, and taking care of the environment. Thank you so much.
Sharing Day. Those here with that proclamation, please join me up front. Hi, how are you?
Sorry?
Thank you for being here today.
You're amazing.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
I hope I get a check.
Jimmy, can you check and see if he has a check somewhere in the?
I hope I get a check today. Beautiful, we appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm grateful to provide this award today or proclamation. Excellence in education is vital to ensuring the continued growth and success of our county, state, and nation. In Cobb County, we seek the betterment of all and look to instill in everyone with a quality education. And whereas by preparing our students for the responsibilities and opportunities of the future, education encourages the adoption of ideals and ethics that equip and unite us in working toward a bright future. Whereas few have better understood or more successfully promoted these ideas than Rabbi Menahem Mendel Schneerson and Lubavitcher Rebbe.
Rebbe.
Rebbe, excuse me. Rabbi, thank you. I tried to do my homework on that. Thank you. He emphasized the importance of education and good character. Through the establishment of educational and social service institutions across the country and world, Rabbi Schneerson sought to empower young people and inspire individuals of all ages. Whereas in recognition of the Rabbi's lasting contributions toward improvements in world education and acts of charity, the U.S. Congress established his birth date as a national day to raise awareness and strengthen education for our children. Now therefore, on this day, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2023, Education and Sharing Day in Cobb County. This is the 28th day of March, 2023.
Just a little rundown of what just happened and what we're honoring, who we're honoring. So, the Lubavitcher Rebbe, the Chabad Grand Rabbi, is responsible for over 5,000 Jewish organizations around the world. There's 20 of them in the state of Georgia. We have a number of them in Cobb County. And the Rebbe was actually awarded after his passing in Congress, the Gold Medal, the Gold Award, which is the highest medal that's awarded to a civilian by the American government in Washington. And if I can, I want to share a quick episode that just will underscore this idea, why we celebrate his birthday as a day of education and sharing. Shirley Chisholm, I'm sure some of you or many of you have heard of her. She was the first African-American Congresswoman to be elected to Congress. And unfortunately, right after she was elected, before she came and she took the oath of office, there were unfortunately then a few racist people in Congress, and they ensured that a Congresswoman from Brooklyn, New York gets put onto the Agricultural Board Committee. And there were actually headlines in Brooklyn at the time that read the following. The headline said, "Does a Tree Grow in Brooklyn?" She wanted to be on the Education and Labor Board and committees. So, she was obviously very upset. She was not happy, obviously, with what happened, transpired. And the Lubavitcher Rebbe, Rabbi Schneerson, the Chabad Grand Rabbi, sent a message to her. A constituent called her and asked her if she would come and have a meeting with the Rebbe. The Rebbe, the Rabbi, wanted to talk to her. She accepted the invitation. She went to the Rebbe's office in, at 770 Eastern Parkway, Brooklyn, New York, and they chatted for a minute, and they asked, she asked the Rebbe, "What should I do about this? This is very frustrating. This is not what I wanted." And just, I think this is powerful, I want to just quote this verbatim. I have it here, just another 30 seconds here. The Rebbe told her, she said, "What should I do?" And here's what the Rebbe, the Rabbi, said when, in her situation. The Rebbe said, "What a blessing God has given you. This country has so much surplus food, and there are so many hungry people, and you can use this gift that God's given you to feed hungry people. Find a creative way to do it." And it turned out to be, on her first day in Congress, she bumped into the newly-elected Senator Robert Dull, and he told her about a surplus that the farmers were experiencing, and they were losing money off their crop. And it rang a bell in her head, like, "Oh, that's what the Rebbe told me about a month ago. Like, how did he foresee this?" And she ended up being responsible, together with Robert Dull and on her own, for the expansion of food stamps and as well as the WIC, which is a supplemental nutrition program for women, infants, and children. And she had a tremendous impact from being on this board that initially seemed like a negative, turned to be a huge positive, and till today is helping millions upon millions of children, women, and men that need this nutrition and need this help from the government. Just to finish off, when she had her, when she finished her service, she was, a breakfast that honored her, and here's what she said at this breakfast. "A rabbi who's an optimist taught me that what you think is a challenge is a gift from God." And then she added, "If poor babies have milk and poor children have food, it's because this rabbi in Crown Heights, Brooklyn had a vision." And so with that, I conclude and say that this story just really underscores, the Rebbe was a rabbi for the Jewish community but was as well concerned for mankind around the world, and this is an amazing story that underscores that. And so, Sharing and Education Day is a day that we can really reflect and recommend ourselves to education and the virtue of sharing, thereby making this world a better place. Thank you for your time. I thought that was a good story to share, and thank you for this proclamation. Thank you for all that you do, the entire board.
Thank you for educating us and sharing with us.
Thank you so much. Take care.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thoroughly appreciated that story.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, that concludes our presentations. I need to take a quick two-minute recess as I am up here battling Pollinville outside, and I will be back shortly. So if we can take a brief recess, thank you. Commissioners, I'm going to ask for your latitude in modifying our agenda tonight because I don't think I'm going to last for the rest of the evening. We had one matter on our agenda that we had the most robust discussion on in our agenda prep. And I would like for us to move up the ARPA section, Agenda Items 28, 29, and 30. Both of those agenda items have been revised. I'd like to move that up before our public hearings tonight so we can vote on that. And then I will turn things over to our Vice Chair, Commissioner Richardson, to chair the rest of the meeting. That would take a four-fifths vote because we'd be changing the order of the agenda. So. Yes, ma'am.
The clerk has on record my statement. Before each of us.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
And if the clerk could also record my statement, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. With that, Commissioners, I move that we modify tonight's agenda to move up the ARPA Agenda Items 28, 29, and 30, where 28 and 30 have been revised, to the portion of our meeting that precedes our two public hearings. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. Jimmy, I believe you're providing direction on these items.
Yes, ma'am, I have 28. And then I believe you have some other presenters after myself. Item number 28 is to approve change order number three to the scope of work with Deloitte Consulting in the continued administration of our Cobb County ARPA program. We brought Deloitte on board back in September of 2021, and they've done a tremendous job in assisting our staff, both financial as well as programmatic, in developing our program to the extent that we received over 200 applications, of which we awarded 80 of those. However, we still have funding remaining that we must now undertake the process of deciding how that goes out the door as well. So we're asking for this contract modification for them, for their continued assistance in that effort, as well as oversight, spending oversight on some of the food programs that we approved prior to them coming on board back in September of '21. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve change order number three to the scope of work with Deloitte Consulting for administering the Cobb County ARPA allocation program.
Thank you, Jimmy. Commissioners, I move that we approve this agenda item as it has been revised.
Second.
Can I, I'm sorry, and also allow the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does that precede our items for the regular agenda as well?
He did not state that as part of the motion.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
But I meant it, though.
It's routine, Jimmy. Get with the program.
With that bit of humor, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this matter? All right, seeing that, I'll call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition.
Thank you.
We also have Agenda Item number 29.
Good evening, Chairwoman Cupid, members of the Board of Commission. My name is Brendan Murphy. I serve as our Chief Magistrate Judge here in Cobb County. With me today, we also have court administrators from three of the courts, Tanisha Phillips from the magistrate court, Christopher Hansard from the Superior Court, and Adolphus Graves from the juvenile court. I come before you seeking one of Jimmy's big checks. No, just kidding. Our item is, I haven't been here, by the way, since this very beautiful and cost-effective renovation, which means I haven't been coming to ask for too much, Doc. So I'm very glad to be here. This is a very simple agenda item. You have already approved the ARPA funding for the joint courts project. What we've been asked to do by Finance and HR is to bring this back before you to create some certain specific positions within the umbrella of funding that was already approved, so they have clear direction and we can move forward. With that, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, I move that we approve this agenda item as it has been revised.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much. It's making a big difference in the courts.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman. Commissioners, County Manager. I'm here for public safety. We only have one tonight, and we would recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of 30 cardiac monitors from funding received pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
All right. Commissioners, I move that we approve this agenda item as it has been presented. Second. Is there any discussion?
In stereo.
Are you looking for a check?
In stereo, right.
We'll take whatever you give us.
All right, we'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, we are going to revert back to our original agenda. We have two public hearings, and I will turn things over to Commissioner Richardson.
All right. And we have Judy here to present the first public hearing. Take it away.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairwoman. The Water Systems here to conduct a public hearing for employment of consulting services where contract fees will likely exceed $100,000 for Pearl of East Cobb Detention Pond Dam/Wall Failure Repair Design.
Thank you. And I don't know, do we read any rules for the public hearing, Bill? I haven't opened it yet, but, okay, I will open the public hearing if you would go over the rules for the public hearing.
Is it an unlimited number of speakers? Just three minutes for each speaker who would want to comment on this and only this topic itself.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Goodbye, Madam Chairman. My name's Craig Harfoot, and I, it bothers me. I talked to the Director here, and she said that all things failed. But when all the building was going on before 2008 and detention ponds were put in, it wasn't you guys. But it was other Commissioners approved these things. And some of them failed as soon as, before the houses were built around them. They just fell in when it was raining. And I think we should include standards. I mean, because I saw a lot of stuff go on back in the bubble days before 2008. And if we're going to end up having to fix stuff that isn't done right when people are just building out, you know, new development, it's not a great thing. And I don't know enough about the particular people, what they're going to build, or say much more than that. But things last longer than that. I mean, I know ponds that are just dirt that last longer than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address this matter? Okay, not seeing anyone. I will call this hearing closed. Judy, I don't know if you want to speak to the issuance of standards, you know, and as far as going with the RFP, to some of the things that were brought up in the gentleman's comments.
So, yes, so we do have standards with respect to how to build detention ponds. Engineers have to design them. Our staff reviews the design. Sometimes, depending on the type of detention pond and the structure, sometimes we even hire an outside firm to review the design. So we do have standards.
Thank you. And I believe there's no vote related to this item. Are there other questions from the? Go ahead.
Judy, this is a county-owned detention pond?
Yes, this is.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you. Oh, that's right, yes. And she also has our next agenda item here, to conduct a public hearing.
Yes, we have a second public hearing. We're conducting a public hearing for employment of consultant services where contract fees will likely exceed $100,000 for Glen Lee Park Detention Pond Wall Foundation Failure Repair Design.
Thank you. And I will go ahead and open up the public hearing at this moment. If anyone would like to address the board, you have three minutes. Unlimited speakers.
Thank you for the opportunity to address. My name is Nathan Watson, and I am the property owner on which the wall sits. I know that it is not currently common practice to place retention walls on a privately-held property for similar concerns as this. But I'm obviously in favor of this going forward because my property has incurred some damage due to it. But I understand the difficulty that the water system has gone through. Everybody, every government and every business went through during the COVID era. But I want to highlight a couple of things that I would ask for some improvement on. One, I first noted this to stormwater management in about 2015. All right, I don't have exact records, so I'm going to leave that ambiguous. Around 2015. I continued to monitor it. There was some erosion on the discharge side, and I get all the water from my neighborhood and the adjacent development. So it all comes into my yard to be retained and slowed down before it goes downstream. I noted the erosion and asked someone to come out and look at it. Someone did promptly come out and look at it, and I was told that it's not a failure issue, so it will be deferred. I continued to monitor it, take photos, and call fairly regularly. They got to know me by name. So then, in 2018, I had just paid myself to have the wall repointed because I was having some concerns with it. And the erosion went all the way back to the front side, punched through. And ever since then, it went from a one-foot-deep by two-foot-wide creek to a 12-foot-wide by roughly six-foot-deep cavern in my backyard. And it's no longer serving its purpose to slow the water going downstream. So two notes that I would like to ask for some improvement on in the system. One is I was never notified, I was never contacted at any state by stormwater management. I brought it up, which I understand is my responsibility as a property owner. But I then had regular monthly, weekly calls to figure out what the status of, the progress for addressing the issue. So a little bit more dialogue and notification. I didn't even know about this meeting until one of my regular calls, I was told about it. So that's one, especially on privately-held systems. Two, is that I would just suggest an update to the priority matrix for repair in this instance. As an example, in this case, it was mild erosion on the discharge side, which could have been addressed for very little. You know, this is, this is not, I had, no one quote this, but probably in the range of about $5,000 to repair back then, let's say, 2015, 2018. Now we're talking about consulting services upwards of $100,000. So I understand it not being a failure issue. There's not a life safety concern. It's not in the front of someone's property. It's not visible. I understand deferring all of that. But financially, for the county, that also represents a liability if our decision matrix continues to push regular maintenance. Sorry, your three minutes are up. Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers that would like to address this topic and this topic only? With that, I will declare this public hearing closed. And Judy, I don't know if there's anything that you would like to mention to address what was discussed or brought up, and certainly open to the other Commissioners for questions.
So I'll certainly talk to staff about the concerns addressed. I was not aware of them, so I'll talk to staff about that.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, well, thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
That concludes the public hearing portion of the meeting. And so we will enter into the public comment portion, which, Bill, do the honors.
Yes, thank you. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. When you come forward, if you will, please state your name and if you are speaking on behalf of any organization. All comments should be addressed through the Chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. The comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comment portion do not necessarily reflect the Board of, the Board, reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And for those speakers that are, as you approach the podium, there is a timer on the podium. The first speaker that has signed up is Alter Moss, Alton Moss. Okay. Then the next speaker is Monica Delancy.
And please, when you hit the podium, please share your name and general location.
Good evening, Monica Delancy. We Thrive Riverside Rental Association and from the good city of Mableton. First, I want to recognize We Thrive Riverside Rental Association. Last week, we were recognized by Cobb Life and Mary Daily Jonah for winning second place in the Best of Cobb County the Nonprofit Division. And let me just tell you a little bit about that. And first, you had to be nominated, right? So you had to be nominated, you had to get so many votes in to be nominated. And so that process started, I want to say, back in December. Then, once you were on the ballot, every day, your fans, your members, your voters, your staff could go online and vote. And so there were approximately 15 nonprofits in the nonprofit division. So for We Thrive Riverside Rental Association to earn the second spot behind Must Mention, who was first, we have no staff. All of us are volunteers. We're a small organization. So basically, we had to have a number of people that were not only affiliated with We Thrive Riverside Rental Association for being a renter and wanting to be a part of the Renters Rights Advocacy, but we had homeowners that got up every day for three months voting for... for We Thrive Riverside Rental Association. And so we were consistent, persistent. I know that every morning, at a certain time, I would send out a message to vote, but before I can do that, people would tell me, "We've already voted." And so when I told them that we won second place, they were so excited because they knew what we had to do to get to that. So I want to thank Mary Daily Journal, as well as Cobb Life, we're featured in the Cobb Life Magazine, and also thank all the people who voted for We Thrive Riverside Rental Association. Because when you are motivated and when you're persistent and consistent, you can win, and that's why I want them to know. Also, I want to recognize We Thrive Riverside Rental Association for their resident leaders who have been doing monthly workshops. Just this past weekend, Sandy Johnson, who was a Realtor, did a workshop for people who were wanting to find out how to become homeowners in Cobb County. And she reached out to me and she said, "Monica, I wouldn't mind doing it again." And she wants to work with a resident leader, they're gonna partner and do more workshops. This weekend, we have some, we have one youth who will be doing a workshop on project initiation, safe driving, not being distracted when you're driving. And we have also another young lady who will be doing a workshop of Why Mommy Work. She wrote a book, and she's going to be presenting this workshop to people as well. And these, the resident leaders, many workshops have been provided via the Community Foundation of Atlanta grant that I received. So, yes, I, we are in the community and doing what we're supposed to do in the community. Also, I want to thank Cobb County Police Department for hosting the Public Safety Forum last Saturday. They invited out all the Kennesaw, Ag works, Ostel, Marietta. And we were at the Police Academy on Saturday, taking part in different workshops. So I want to congratulate Chief Van Hooser for organizing that, as well as some community members who spent their Saturday. But I do want to also note that eviction court, Cobb County Eviction Court, is still wall-to-wall with families, especially black families, who are being evicted. And they're not being evicted because of non-payment. Some people are being evicted because after they receive the rent money, they decide not to renew their lease. And so you have people that's being displaced because of the law that states that they don't have to renew their lease. So that's something we need to change. We have people that are getting their leases renewed because they're telling them and informing property managers about keeping their property up to code, about resident concerns, right? So if they can just wake up one day and say, "Hey, we don't need voices telling us what to do, we're not gonna renew the lease," what is that doing to our community? What is that doing to our families? So we need to address that. And also, I know Mr. Moss wanted to speak about, he's been calling different agencies, and he's been told that different agencies that receive, you know, rental assistance money, they have a waiting list. And so he's just wanted to just bring in the concern that people are looking for rental assistance still, and he can't even get on the waitlist because the need is so high. So thanks for letting me share, again, Monica Delancey from the great city of Mableton. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Melissa Martin.
Just a reminder, please state your name and your general location. Thank you.
See, that's an ADA issue. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager, and the District Attorney. My name is Reginald Knight. I'm here to address the issues of ADA. I was the ADA Coordinator for Cobb County for approximately 15 years. I was initially at Cobb County as the person that cleaned up this room. I used to do the janitorial services for this room. A young lady by the name of Kathy Simpson decided that I was too qualified to clean floors, so her and Bob, Bob, can't think of his name right now, I'm getting old, no, worked with me, Bob and John Rader. Harrison, there we go. Bob Harrison, they were the ones that hired me as the ADA Project Manager. I worked that position for about nine months and then Kathy Simpson decided she was going to go and work as the Alzheimer's Director. So that left me here by myself. So I was the ADA Coordinator and the Project Manager. That is what Cobb County has a problem with. I don't know if you know it, but during COVID, Cobb County was still functional. However, a lot of things changed during COVID. The number-one thing that changed during COVID is that Cobb County, when I started, had 400,000 people. Now we're almost 800,000 people. We still almost have the same-sized staff. You cannot support that kind of increase in population with the same staff. I know the Commissioners have done as best job as they could. I've worked with all of them, at least most of them. Some of the new ones I haven't worked with. I've worked with the County Manager when she was the Agency Director. My major job and my major point here this evening is, I've found, since I retired, that I am now using the stuff that I decided to build a lot more. I've gotten older and I do need the stairs, I do need the elevators, I do need the ramps, I do need the handrails. Y'all need assistive listening system signs in here. I know Sarah hasn't got to it yet, but I know she will. What I would like to say is that we need to do a better job of ensuring that when our roadways are built, when our sidewalks are built, they're built to ADA code. They no longer need to go back and redo them after we've already done them. That is what I'm seeing. As you can see, even at the Atlanta Road and South Loop, they're redoing the sidewalks there because they didn't comply. That's the city of Marietta. We have Cobb County that's building Windy Hill Connector. We have the Floyd Road Connector. We have all these projects going on in Cobb County, but there's nobody to review the plans to make sure that they're being done correctly. The biggest problem I see, and the biggest problem I saw when I worked with Cobb County, is that when you draw plans, they're drawn on a flat plane. When you go out to construct, they're not constructed on a flat plane. So that's what makes them inconsistent. That's what makes them need to be reviewed and need to be in compliance. I've worked with everyone, pretty much Jimmy Geese, Eddie Cannon, and all those folks. And I think parks and all the rest of them, DOT, libraries, elections, all those people very familiar with me, they've called me a lot of different names to stay out of their offices, but I'm always there. One of the things that I was going to mention, even though the Chairwoman left, I used to, I was the person that replaced all of those gold windows in that funny-looking building over there next door. I was the one that put the green windows in. And every morning, I would see the Chairwoman come in early to go to work. And I'm sure that that's the same thing that all the rest of you Commissioners are doing, is going to work early because running Cobb County is no joke when you have that many people that you don't have on staff and you have to try to make up the difference. So I did have a contract with Cobb County as a consultant. I let that go during COVID, only because of the fact that, you know, I did not want to work during COVID either. But I am the owner and operator of All Abilities Consulting LLC, and I would love to get back and help this county and assisted county with ADA compliance. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Donald Barth, over in Marietta. I wanted to come before you and address some things tonight, so I'm gonna start with the good, the bad, and the ugly. The good. That thing that Van Hooser put on, the public safety, that was a great community-building tool. It was a fantastic tool. I mean, we wound up in there talking, some of us all. You wound up with implicit biases, what you really thought, or what... The best one out of it was community trust, to me. Other people went to different seminars and they took a lot out of it. So I tried to write them all and tell them, "Thank you for having us," including all the police chiefs that took the time and brought their departments to represent everybody. Sheriff was there, walking around one-on-one. I mean, you can't get any better than that in Cobb County, top of the line. Bad, let's go to bad, we won't hit on it long. Tonight, we had to have two Commissioners still stand down because we know what we've done is not right. When it comes to assignment of a Commissioner, it's done by voting. When they change the district lines, so what? I still would have the same Commissioner. I didn't have anything to do with it, you know? You would be over, I would be here, we don't know where the hell I am yet. I'm still out there, and y'all have to stand there and talk because you're really not where you're supposed to be. I hope somebody, if we throw out this lawsuit, files what they call a mandamus. Let's go that route. Let's let somebody at a court system make a writ of mandamus. Let's fix it. Let's keep the Commissioners. I don't care, y'all all serve me, so that's great. Now the ugly. Let's go down to Delk Road and Powers Ferry. There is a Kroger store that is fixing to be closed, and we're gonna move the Kroger to what the county has spent a lot of energy revitalizing that area at Terrell Mill and Powers Ferry. Y'all spent some good money. Let's use the same talent to come back down. Guy wants to come in and put apartments right there, high-end apartments, but I'm hearing from the mayor, the media, "Oh, we don't do apartments." Who doesn't do apartments? People grow up living in apartments. Renters are not the scourge of the earth. If you gotta start out of college, do you walk right out and buy a house? No. Most people start out renting a room or living in an apartment. So when I hear somebody go off and act like they're better than everybody else, makes me mad because we all could be in that boat tomorrow. So apartments are not a scourge, and I keep hearing that. Then I heard another one, "We wanna turn it into Little Brazil." Pardon me, I want the diversity that I have in my neighborhood now. I don't want it to be one of this, one of that. I don't want to go back to a segregated lifestyle. I grew up in segregated life. I live in a diverse community now, and my community is great. My neighbors are great. I have neighbors from all walks of life and other nations. You know where they came from when they come in the neighborhood? I don't know. I just say, "Hi, neighbor, what can we do for you?" And we all work together. They bring me their food. I get fed food all the time from different cultures. Hey, does it look like it's bothering me? No. So what I want to say to y'all is, if this problem persists, like the thing down at Delk Road, that is going into Cobb County. It doesn't have a damn thing to do with the city, never will. So protect what is yours. If you gotta re annex the land to revitalize it, do so. Take care of your own. Let's build our community at the county level, and I'll work on them one day at a time. It's tough. Thank you for your time.
Craig Harfoot.
My name's Craig Harfoot, and I have... Is Accenture on the consent agenda? I can't get an answer on that. Is it, are you gonna vote to approve Accenture's?
I'll answer that question, but it's not like dialogue. It's not on the agenda, on the consent agenda.
Thank you. I don't want to say something...
It was something that was voted on earlier.
I'm glad it's not on the agenda. Thank you. But we'll talk about it later. Anyhow, there's a lot more important stuff. Since last was here, I went in-depth into banking and, you know, with Credit Suisse and all these things. And, oh, the thing I learned tonight that I didn't know, that I have Shirley Chisholm and Bob Dole to thank for my first steady job that lasted 13 years in the food stamp program. And that came about because of escalating the Vietnam War and the recession that happened and the bubble, and it, like I said, what we got now, where we are now, is gonna be worse. And we did 2008. That was worse. But they've, we've never really recovered, and they printed more money. And every time they print money, it makes money worth less. So we're in a battle between China and other nations. Who's making the most worthless money? Who's gonna go bankrupt first? And then we get to the core matter, it's like, and this is really what troubled me, is that the current Denton attorney that, you know, is our lobbyist, that you're considering having one lobbyist that, for Washington and here, is tied right into China. It's, their home office is Beijing, Washington, and Switzerland. Well, UBS, which is owned 51% by the Swiss government, just had to take over Credit Suisse, and the other 49% is owned by three entities of China. And so, a lot of bad stuff. And so our top-two-tier banks, JP Morgan, the too-big-to-fail, Bank of America, too-big-to-fail, they, JP Morgan's all tangled up in China. And now we're starting a conflict. Bank of America's tied up into Russia, and we're having a conflict. And that's why I'm saying, it's real shaky times we're going into, and you gotta keep your powder dry, meaning you can't spend a bunch of money because we don't have it. And the land bank thing and the Accenture plan, you will, you will actually, the base of the community, they'll be wiped out with that thing because it's basically another tier of predatory lending. And it's all because they raised the rates too fast after keeping them low so long. The 1% to try to get us out of, you know, 2015, we were supposed to have recovered. You know, after seven years, you're supposed to recover from a big recession when they printed more money to bail them out, and we didn't. So they did that. And, but the biggest problem we got is weather. California was in a drought, Mississippi River was in a drought, and what do they call that? Atmospheric rivers. Filled up California in two months. Everything's full again. But every piece of produce in that state's wrecked. There's gonna be a food issue. China just bought up our grain reserves. So I don't know that we have surplus food in the future. And I propose that we start encouraging people to grow their own foods in this county, our vegetables in their yards, whatever, just food security. And anyhow, the biggest banks are the ones insolvent, and yet the last thing I saw is that Silicon Valley Bank. They basically, they were trying to sell off the low-yield treasuries, and that's what did it to them. And what did, what happened? They acted like, "Oh, JP's all the big bank, scare the money to it."
Mr. Harfoot, I'm sorry, your time's up. The next speaker is Tyler Bigler.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tyler Bigler, Commissioners, County Staff. Thanks for having us here. I grew up in Cobb. I currently live in District 3, and I moved back a few years ago after living multiple places in the States and overseas after serving in the Air Force. I just wanted to extend my thanks to Cobb DOT, I just wanted to extend my thanks to Cobb DOT, Parks Department, Commissioner Burl for hosting the Nunde Creek Trail Extension Open House a few weeks ago. I really enjoyed the conversations with the consulting firm and the county staff. They were very helpful and were up for answering all kinds of questions. It was a really cool event. I was really happy to see a lot of homeowners that are near the project, the planned project area, that were also excited about using the routes that follow the creek and keep the trail users off the busy roads and away from dangerous loud cars. So that was really, really cool. I'm a regular user of that trail. I think it's kind of a hidden gem of Cobb County, honestly. It's really great. So I'm excited about the prospect of it connecting communities, parks, and more commercial areas within Cobb and Cherokee County if the full trail gets completed, and connecting those places by other methods than cars. I also want to extend my appreciation to Commissioner Richardson for hosting the Agenda Preview yesterday. I wish I had attended that a year ago when I started watching these meetings online on YouTube. It was kind of like a tutorial and explanation and more context of the structure of the meeting and some of the terminology and things like that in background. So it was really, it was great. So I'm thanking you for your time, and I look forward to more projects like the Nunde Creek Trail Extension and more trail projects in the future. Thank you.
Nathan Watson. He spoke during a public hearing. I think he exited. Our Vice Chair, that's the conclusion of the public speakers.
Thank you very much. And we will certainly continue on with public comment in the second half. There were no others? Oh, okay. No others. All right. Well, I suppose not. Commissioners, we can move into the consent agenda. Of course, there have been a couple of changes that are done. So with that, I will motion to approve the following items on the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call it a question. And the motion passes four, four-zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent. And we can move on to the regular agenda, which, of course, we have already approved or moved three items up. Drew, thanks for jumping ahead, and we'll open up with transportation.
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager. DOT only has four items tonight.
It's a record.
We'll get you next. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Accelerate Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $2,276,600 for Callaway Road sidewalk. Project number X-2778 authorized corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Call it a question. Was there... Okay. Sorry. I suppose there was no discussion. Proceed.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Sheffield Contracting Incorporated. A savings to the project in the amount of $56,434.59 for drainage system repairs on Lake Latimer Drive. Project number X-2286 authorized a corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call it a question. Next. Motion passes four-zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $106,435 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Austell Road sidewalk. Project number X-2765 authorized a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call it a question. Motion carries four, four yeses and with Chairwoman, four-zero with Chairwoman not present.
Thank you. Our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed $238,134 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Old Alabama Road sidewalk. Project number X-2769 authorized a corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call it a question. Motion carries four-zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go forward, I just want to check with our clerk. There's some questions regarding whether the proper announcement was made relating to item 31.
I didn't call that the approval was four-zero.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for the grace, everybody. All right. And I understand we don't have any other paper for public comment. So onward to appointments. Commissioner Gambrell, we've got an approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of John Pape to the Recreation Board.
Second. Any discussion? Call it a question. And the motion passes four-zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent. Next item is also an approval. This is Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
I make a motion to approve the reappointment of Elliot Hennington to the Recreation Board.
Second.
Any discussion? Call it a question. Fantastic. Motion carries four-zero with Chairwoman Cupid absent. Next items are just announcements. So Commissioner Burl.
Yes, I would like to announce the appointment of John Lloyd to the Home Builders Advisory Board, and he will replace Ronnie Rains.
Fantastic. Next item here is Chairwoman's announcement to announce the appointment of Karen Hill, Marty Hughes, and William Tangs to the Workforce Development Board. That brings us to the conclusion of the voting items and into the Commissioners' public addresses. Commissioner Gambrell, take us away.
Thank you. This past weekend, the Cobb County Police Department hosted the Public Safety Forum, which included all six cities' public safety agencies in Cobb County. Citizens were able to engage with the department leaders and discuss many topics from policing to emerging technology and what they can do to help keep Cobb County one of the best places to live, work, and play. Chief Van Hooser believes in having an open discussion with the citizens of Cobb County, so be sure to follow my newsletter for updates on the next public forum. A special thank you also to Blue Thanksgiving's team for the meal preparation and the food donation by Publix on Cobb Parkway at Giles Road. Get to know your county. Our Cobb County staff is excited to continue the Cobb 101 Citizens Government Academy tradition for 2023. This academy is a 10-week course designed to provide an in-depth look at the many functions of Cobb County government. It will be held at various government buildings throughout Cobb County, allowing participants to experience what the Cobb County government does for our residents. Applications will open on April 1st. The class will be limited to 30 participants. For more information, you can contact Cobb 101 Team at cobb101@cobbcounty.org or call And lastly, talk and walk with your Commissioner. We are going to, in celebration of Take a Walk in the Park Day, you can join me, our Sheriff's Deputy, Cobb Senior Services, and West Cobb Walk at 1:00 PM tomorrow, March 29th, as we explore the AL Burris Nature Park. This 1.2-mile loop trail is generally considered an easy route. It takes an average of 25 minutes to complete. The starting point will be in the parking lot, so meet us there, and let's take a walk in the park, and there might be cookies.
She's bribing us with cookies. I know, it's not. All right. Ramadan Mubarak, Happy Easter, joyous Passover, and certainly Happy Resurrection Sunday as well. They're all, we're all celebrating these things this season. Ramadan began the evening of March 22nd. Passover will begin the evening of April 5th, and Easter will be on April 9th. From the office, we've got the Q1 Town Hall coming up. Super exciting. This is actually where we will unveil all of the priorities for the year. We've completed the priorities tour, so collected all the things that the community is interested in seeing come out of the office. This will take place at 6:00 PM at the Boy Scouts of America Building, and we'll have a cabinet networking event afterwards. Join the D2 team as our new Chief of Staff, Deputy Commissioner, stealing from Commissioner Sheffield's term there, where, of course, Aleah is rolling off. I'm losing her. Jokingly said, "Good riddance." I kept my promise. But yes, the job position is open. It can be found using the QR code on your screen or by visiting cobbcounty.org/humanresources if you would like to speak with our office about particulars of this position. You can certainly learn more by reaching out to Aleah herself, and we just really appreciate everything that you've contributed to the office. Community updates. You've got the Cobb Extravaganza. Bring the family out for a day of fun and egg hunts at the Cobb County Park's 30th Annual Extravaganza. There will be free games, crafts, and family activities, prizes, and food available for purchase. The event will be held noon to 4:00 PM Saturday, April 1st, at Al Bishop Softball Complex in Marietta. Gates open at noon with different hunt start times beginning based on age. Bring your egg hunt basket, and we will see you there. For more information, visit cobbcounty.org. And next is the LEGO Free Play Fridays. Are you looking for a place that you can take your child to meet other children their age and play, explore, and get super creative? Well, look no further than LEGO Free Play Fridays at the East Cobb Library. We will have tons of LEGO building blocks set up for your child to use however they want. Sometimes we might have short building challenges, or we may take pictures for social media. The sky's the limit with what you can do. This program is intended for children ages 3 to 10. Duplo will be provided for children under 5. No registration is required. And that concludes my comments. Commissioner Burl.
Low-cost companionship at Cobb County Animal Shelter. March on over to Cobb County Animal Services Shelter to find the perfect match. Did you know that when you get your pet from a shelter, you save both an animal and a lot of money? Cobb Shelter ensures your new pet is medically sound before sending you home to be forever friends. In March, all pets are $30. You can make an appointment at cobbcounty.org/pets and see all the animals that are available for adoption. Cobb County Animal Services is located at 1060 Al Bishop Drive, Marietta. The next How to Do Business with Cobb County is tomorrow, Wednesday, March 29th at noon, and it is a webinar put on by Cobb County Purchasing Staff, and it is free informational series, features a single Cobb County Department, sharing details about the department's current and future procurement needs and specific points of contact. The March webinar will highlight Cobb's property management department and business opportunities for bid. For information and to register, go to cobbcounty.org/purchasing/news. We've got some recycling dates coming up for, I guess, for Great American Cleanup Month. It's time to start your spring cleaning and then bring your clutter to the Keep Cobb Beautiful Community Recycling Event, 9 to 1 Saturday, April 15th, at Jim Miller Park Event Center, 2245 Callaway Road, Marietta. Electronics and hefty energy back, energy program items will be accepted. There will also be an onsite paper shredding. And Medication Takeback Day is April, Saturday, April 22nd. Don't forget to also spring clean the medicine cabinets. Safely dispose of unused and expired medications by bringing them to this free event, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Saturday, April 22nd. Two locations, Precinct 1, 2380 Kyle Parkway, Kennesaw, and the Freeman Pool Senior Center, 425 South Hurt Road in Smyrna. Accepted items are prescriptions over the counter in liquid and pill form, ointments, patches, creams, vials, and pet medicines. Visit keepcobbbeautiful.com for more information on what is accepted and what is not accepted. Don't forget, April 1st is a deadline to apply for your homestead exemption for this tax year. As a Cobb County resident, homestead exemptions are a great way to reduce the amount of property taxes you pay for your home. Homestead exemptions are deducted from the assessed value of the qualifying property, 40% of the fair market value. Exemptions may apply to homestead property you own and occupy as your legal residence. You can have a homestead exemption on only one property, your primary residence. If you're married, you can only have one homestead exemption between you and your spouse. To file, you can go to cobbtax.org p property slash exemptions slash, I mean, period, P-H-P. Time coming up for the library book sale. Cobb County Public Library Spring Book Sale will be held Friday through Sunday, April 14th through the 16th, at the Civic Center, 548 South Marietta Parkway. Hours are Friday and Saturday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM and Sunday, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. There's plenty of free parking. You can find books for all ages in both hardcover and paperback, magazines, DVDs, books on CD, audiocassette and audio cassettes. Prices range from 10 cents to $4. All profits from the book sale go directly to buying more items for Cobb County Public Library's 15 branches and bookmobile. For more information, visit cobbcounty.org/library. And Happy Easter. Remember, Cobb County offices will be closed on Friday, April 7th, and observe its Good Friday, and we hope you have a fun and safe weekend with your family.
Thank you, Commissioner Burl. Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Vice Chair. District 4 News and Updates. Precinct 3 Police and Community Affairs officers participated in their first law enforcement engagement lunch with students at Osborne High School on Thursday, March 23rd. Officers joined students on their lunch breaks to answer questions and listen to their concerns regarding law enforcement and community relationships and school safety. It was an enlightening experience where the officers and students in both groups look forward to future community engagement opportunities. You are invited to join Mayor Pro Tem Valerie Anderson and the City of Austell elected officials for a town hall meeting this coming Thursday, March 30th, from 7:00 to 8:30 PM at the Beacon of Light Church located at 2050 Collins Boulevard in Austell. Discussions will include upcoming and pending projects and the range of services that the city provides to the community. Residents will have an opportunity to discuss ideas and connect with their city council members. To learn more about this event, visit www.austell.gov. Join us on Wednesday, April 12th from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM for the Freeman Pool Senior Center Grand Reopening. The center closed a few months for renovations due to a burst pipe during the cold wave in December. We are excited about the upgrades and look forward to the reveal. A special thanks to property management and senior services for getting us back on track. And also, please join me at the center on Friday, May 12th, for my spring basket-making class. All of the materials will be provided. The center is located at 4025 South Hurt Road in Smyrna. Please call 770-801-3400 to RSP both for the grand reopening and for the basket-making class. A special election runoff for the City of Mableton will be on April 18th with the mayoral and council seats 2, 3, 4, and 5. Candidates that did not meet the Candidates that did not meet the requirement of fifty percent plus one vote must participate in a runoff. To review results for elections held on Tuesday, March 21st, please visit CobbElections.org. The Austell Community Task Force and the Mableton Improvement Coalition will host a runoff candidate forum on April 5th from 6:30 to 8:30. Please email info@mableton.org to register for the forum. I encourage you to exercise your right to vote for this very important election. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Election Day. Join me and Chief Magistrate Judge Brendan Murphy as we host a Career in Health Fair and pop-up legal clinic on Saturday, April 22nd, at the Cobb County Civic Center located at 548 South Marietta Parkway in Marietta. Pre-registration for the legal clinic begins at 9:30 AM. Free advice will be given from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Cobb County Human Resources Department, Wellstar, Cobb WorksSource, and Chattahoochee Tech College will be conducting onsite interviews from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The Cobb WorksSource mobile unit will be on site for job seekers to complete applications and update resumes. Wellstar will provide free information and health checks. For more information, contact Deidra.Watts@CobbCounty.org in my office, or Tanisha Phillips at CobbCounty.org in Judge Murphy's office. The Taste of Mableton is only a few weeks away. Last year's inaugural event was a huge success. The community came together as one to enjoy multicultural food, great music, community fellowship, and discussion panels to include elected officials. The free event is scheduled for April 15th from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Mable House Complex located at 5238 Floyd Road in Mableton. And finally, the South Cobb Resource Fair. The Cobb Collaborative and the First Christian Church of Mableton are looking forward to hosting their South Cobb Resource Fair on May 6th. The South Cobb Resource Fair will provide a wonderful opportunity to connect with neighbors and chat with organizations and local community partners that offer resources to help empower families and help communities thrive. There will be activities for children, prizes, and much more for the entire family to enjoy. Please note that the event location has been changed to the Mableton Elementary School located at 5220 Church Street in Mableton. For more information, please contact Pastor Barry Smith at 404-421-3751. Thank you, Vice Chair. That concludes my comments.
Wonderful. And that brings our meeting to a close. So, meeting adjourned. Thank you.